Okay, welcome to this evening's work session. We will start with roll call. And I guess, since we're supposed to be in person, I guess Commissioner Hambrick.
Uh, here, here.
Madam Clerk, show myself and Commissioner Hambrick here. Currently Commissioners Franklin and Davis not present. All right. First items, preliminary items for our next BLC meeting. There's only one thing that I would like to discuss, and at this time I would call up, and it's the Gilbert Road project. So at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Vincent up and give him the floor.
Good evening Commissioners, thank you for having us here. You know, we were came early in the year to present this project to you all. And now today, we're just going to give you an update on where we're at and hopefully get the information to you because tonight we will do our bond resolution and development authority meeting for this project. It's just a great project for our county, for our citizens, and for the companies involved that are there. And it's just a project that's going to take Atlanta, the mountain view, and pull it all together and get it moving for us. I know that's in Miss Hambridge District, and it's been one we've been looking at for a number of years.
Right.
And we'll let Dan McCray lead the lines for the project here with you all on where we're at.
Thank you, and it's really good to be back. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. So I wish I could stay to hear about Strategic Economic Development Plan, but I've got to run off and get a $75 million bond inducement approved by the authority. And things are really very active in Clayton County, and I'm glad to say that industrial development is going to be a big part of it. I hope this project contributes a lot to it, and things are looking optimistic. The investment amount was early estimated at between $50 and $55 million dollars for the build out of the industrial parks and industrial buildings. That estimate has gone up to $75 million. The job creation, those jobs are always important. The first project that we hope to locate is a logistics prospect that we've mentioned to you before. That project ought to account by itself for 100 jobs in the first year, adding 20 jobs in the second year, so that's $120. And at the end of five years, the developer estimates maybe 1,400 jobs there. So the pace of the project, we talked about moving and building forward this project as momentum. We will be back in August for your work session and your regular meeting to present the contract which is between the Development Authority and the county. This is really a development authority project, a development authority lab, and we need the county's assistance with it. And with that, we expect that within a couple of months, we'll actually be able to break ground after.
Right.
So that's the report, it's looking good, the item is built up, and we all know that. Anything else I can tell you that's up?
Any questions?
Yes, well, it's not really a question, but a statement or request. And for the Development Authority, please, once this, well, completed or doing the strategic effort, if we would really stress hiring Clayton County residents.
Absolutely.
I would like us to do that.
Yes, I appreciate the respect. The work towards the initiative is going well. We'll focus on training Clayton County citizens and knowing where it goes, applying to jobs, and once we get the jobs, we'll do all that we can, and it's my ambition to make sure we serve our citizens first.
Especially since this is really a large project, with this many prospective employees. Hopefully we can do that.
Well, the good thing, the good news is this is just a win win. Once we get this started, the rest of Mount Dusha follow and shore all of our people's civic message. All of that sort of land that Clayton County is really open to business.
Thank you.
So thank you all for your leadership and support, and you couldn't have done it without teamwork of all, all the parties, both the counties and local authorities in the country. So we'll stop saying that we couldn't have gotten that without the support and support that we're doing, which is thank you so very much.
Thank you. While we're thanking people, I want to thank the Development Authority, the county's Economic Development Department, the county's Legal Department, and the Transportation Department. They have been so helpful, so professional, and so great through their work this year. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, the next work item is the Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Thank you. Good evening Board of Commissioners. Tonight's work session item is an update presentation by the CREST team of Clayton State University. This is basically a culmination of 10 months of work that the CREST team and the Steering Committee for Clayton County has been doing to address how to maximize economic development opportunities for Clayton County. The project was funded by the Development Authority, and we are appreciative of them for taking on the initiative of that. Our last update was done in 2013, so it is overdue, and we're happy to be at this juncture. So we'll be presenting to you tonight the data dive of the executive summary, the community survey, and the recommendations by the CREST team at Clayton State as they present the findings that are a culmination of the ideas, suggestions, and data recommendations from the business community, homeowners, and professionals. You will find that the study was broken down into four categories that we felt needed to be addressed, one being housing and income quality, the other labor and employment, small business and entrepreneurship, and then health care and well-being of our citizens. So at this time, I'll let Mr. Vincent, Representative Development Authority, say anything he'd like to say, and then we'll turn it over to Dr. Hayduk and Dr. Reza to present. Thank you.
Well, once again, this is just a culmination, a lot of great teamwork by the county folks and the Development Authority, and we're very proud and pleased that we had an opportunity to take that 2013 plan that we put together, George, taking use of our own university this time around. And I can just tell that the Commissioners that are here, there was a team effort across the board. We even had the COO on committee, and Ms. Rockwell was on the committee. So we touched basically several of the county departments, a lot of community representation. And tonight, we want this, the CREST team to introduce themselves, but also present it to you all because we would like for you all to really take a deep dive and look at it. Some of the recommendations will involve not only county departments, but the Chamber, the Development Authority, and the Office of OED. And we want you all to, when you get comfortable with it, at the next board meeting, think about voting for a recommendation to accept and give us some direction to go in because we've got some things here that is really going to help the county from a cultural behavior standpoint. We're going to leave the big economic development to the Department of OED and, you know, zoning and all that kind of stuff where it belongs in the technical side of the business. And this plan here dealing with the people side. That's where we talk about hiring Clayton County in for our Clayton County jobs. We've got some work to do there, and we've got to address that culture that's led us not having enough folks. So we're going to address all that in this plan, and just thank y'all once again for your leadership and your teamwork. And we'll turn it over to our CREST team, make sure any of you there want.
And real quick, I want to hand these to the officer. There's a flash drive for all of you to have and share and look at later. We'll share with your constituents in your meetings, so I'm going to hand these to you.
Good evening. My name is Reza Kerendish. I'm the Department Chair for Department of Accounting, Finance, and Economics at Clayton State University, College of Business. It's a pleasure for me to start giving you a report of where we are on our journey that started about a year ago. My colleagues, Dr. Irene Hanayad, Dr. Russell Spiel, and Brian, sorry. Brian Hans is with me for a moment. I had a little bit of anxiety, I suppose.
Well, it's been very, very long.
Yes, we haven't seen each other for a while, actually. So we are here to talk to you about what we have done in the last year. We will start with something that you all are very familiar with, and those are the six pillars of your strategic plan. I will give you a flash forward of what we have come up, and then in the next 30 minutes, we try to elaborate on how we came up with these pillars that actually are mapped to your six pillars. So let's, let's start with the promote entrepreneurship and small business group, which is one of our strategic priorities. And it is related to your growth management and economic opportunity pillar. Then workforce development and employee engagement, which is also related to your town opportunity and management. Housing and education empowerment, which is related to growth management, quality of life, and economic opportunity. And then leverage access to healthcare, which is related to your pillars, quality of life, economic opportunity, communication and image, and growth management. And finally, last but not least, the center which is basically connecting all of these, you know, priorities to each other, is empower collaboration through effective communication, which is related to growth management, communication, and image governance, and even fiscal responsibility to transparency that we will create. Then I will pass it to Irene to continue.
Good evening. As Dr. Ferandis said, my name is Irene Hanayad, and I'm an economics professor in the College of Business at Clayton State University, and I also serve as the Director of the Research Center that produced this project. So this slide illustrates the strategic planning process that the Steering Committee and the CREST team have followed to design this economic development plan. The CREST team collected extensive information about economic conditions in Clayton County and five other surrounding counties, and we have performed a comprehensive analysis of these data. The team supplemented the secondary data with the information obtained through surveying all relevant stakeholders in Clayton County. We reached out to all 3,200 registered businesses in Clayton, as well as various government agencies. Using the findings from the secondary data analysis, the CREST team and the Steering Committee Chairs identified four priority areas in Clayton County that need improvement, and we formed four task forces that were focusing on this area. These, these four subcommittees convened on a bi-weekly basis from October 2020 to May 2021 to identify issues that hinder economic development in Clayton County, and of course, to provide recommendations for addressing them. The CREST team and the Steering Committee Chairs also organized and hosted three Steering Committee retreats. One in October 2020, then in January 2021, and the third one in April 2021. At these meetings, we presented the findings from the primary data analysis, secondary data analysis, spot analysis, and of course, the subcommittees' reports. But more importantly, we collected feedback from all Steering Committee members and incorporated their comments and suggested and suggestions to refine the strategic plan and to improve it. And next, my colleague, Dr. Ferandis, Dr. Fakir Fikir.
So what we did was we collected the data that was publicly available about Clayton County and started from there. What is going to come here is just a brief summary of some findings, but most of the actual findings from secondary data will be in the report that will be presented to you, I guess, by the end of this month. It is already being reviewed by Steering Committee Chairs, and as soon as they tell us it is okay, we will forward it to you as. So this is just a summary of some findings, but the whole secondary data analysis finding is about 50 pages long. So just, this is a glimpse of what we have got. One of the pillars, what an important, you know, subcommittee group, was working on education. Of course, we thought that education is very important, so this is a snapshot of where we are standing when it comes to education. This is the K through 12 grade, so this is actually graduation rate at different counties. And I should mention that we, through the course of this plan, compared Clayton County with our surrounding neighboring counties Fayette and Henry, and then to add some other counties for benchmarking, we also added Cal, Decaf, and Fulton County. So this, in general, throughout the report, we followed this guideline. Now, when it comes to graduation rate, as you can see, Clayton County stands not at an ideal point. However, the good news is that through our, you know, time series analysis, we found that the situation is getting better and better. So the school system has done a good job improving what we basically could consider a lower than standard level of graduation rate, but we are moving in the right direction. And that direction is very important. So kudos to the school system for moving in the right direction. But, you know, if you want to compare, Fayette County, for example, has 91.3, which is the maximum on these six counties. And one of the...
Excuse me, what's, what's the date on this data?
This is the latest available from the Georgia Department of Education, which was And then the bachelor degree or higher, percent of population with bachelor degree or higher is on this graph, and as you can see, we are close to 20% as opposed to some other counties, for example, Fulton or Decaf, the green one. And then this one is Henry, and this highest on top is Fayette, the orange one, and the top one is, I don't know, little, Fulton, yes, I think it is Fulton. And this one is Decaf. All right, with that said, I'm going to pass this to, oh, one more, actually, number of firms. By the way, I forgot to mention that, I should have mentioned, is one of our colleagues, Dr. Renudd Benson, who was also involved in this whole project, could not be here today, so he sent his regrets. I'm presenting his part as well, and this is his fault. So the number of firms in Clayton County, which we can consider small businesses with one to four employees, as you can see, this number has decreased over the course of years. This is up to 2018. As they become available, we will update it, but as I mentioned, these are all, you know, the publicly available data. This actually was one of the inspirations for us to think, think about how we can improve the entrepreneurship and the small businesses situation in Clayton County, which you will see in the front. Now, Brian?
Good evening Commissioners. As you all know, housing, excuse me, as you all know, housing is quite critical to any county's economic development. My, my subcommittee that covered housing, poverty, and income inequality spent the last 10 months not only discussing the issues of the housing market in Clayton County, but also proposed recommendations moving forward based upon the solve. It is not surprising that since the end of the last financial crisis, that the growth in renting has somewhat displaced home ownership. Consequently, at the end of the last financial crisis in 2010, the number of vacant housing units in Clayton County exceeded about 20,000. Excess vacant, amount of vacant housing units across all six counties is significantly large. So a lot of the increase in the rental rate relative to home ownership is a consequence of these excess housing units that could not be sold being shifted into a renters' market. And number two, that since 2017, of all renter occupied housing, about 40% of all renters came in in 2017. So that explains some of the spike in actual renting. But an immediate consequence of that, in terms of the growth in renting relative to home ownership, has caused median home values to lose an average of about 57 cents for every dollar increase in median household income since 2007, and as much as about maybe 67 cents for every dollar increase in median household income since 2019. This difference is what would the overall gain in housing within home values per dollar had there been a much smaller overall renters' market. But it's actually shown actually here, excuse me, where the overall trend is showing that the actual tax, or rent tax, as I call it, has gotten much semeer, severe. The upswings in that represent improvements when there were new additions to housing to the housing stock. So this can actually be turned, turned around. Also, our analysis of the housing market indicated a lack of diversity in housing and household income, as shown by the charts in this slide. One consequence is that given that much of the income weightedness is on the lower tier end, and that much of the overall stock in median home values is on the lower tier end, does create a fiscal constraint in the future in terms of an over-dependence on property taxes collected from these actual properties. This can be remedied, as actually shown by other counties, in terms of improving the house, improving the diversity of home values in the county that would also correlate with improving middle and high-income actual sectors as well. And last but not least, in the emerging post-COVID environment, we've definitely seen in the last 12 months nationwide, an exurbanization, the persons moving out of highly populated dense areas and moving more, out further out to less populated dense areas. For all six counties, Clayton County actually had the highest increase in median home value by population density, especially in the last, in the last several years. This has been an ongoing trend, it's just been more amplified. If you look at the slide on the actual right, Clayton County actually had one of the highest increases in the ratio of price, home price increases, all the home price reductions. Any correction of that within the last several months, it's more or less people going back to work and going back into the office. But there's an opportunity to capture the remote working individual, to especially the young professional, millennial professionals, outline the recommendations, so we can be able to import that job and that pay actually to the actual county. With that, I will hand it over to Dr. Irene.
Next, I will focus on the leading market strategy. And as shown on this chart on the left, the average earnings per job in Clayton have exhibited an upward trend over the last two decades, and it is also important to emphasize that the earnings per job in Clayton actually back closely tracking Fayette levels, and they even trended above the Henry and Fayette levels. At the same time, if you look on the personal income per capita data, as shown on this chart on the right, this, this measure has been the lowest in Clayton County, and the gap between Clayton and other counties has even increased over time. The main reason for this issue is that 77% of all positions in Clayton are filled by income users just because many Clayton County residents do not qualify for these jobs. I will also present the findings from the analysis of the healthcare characteristics, and this table records the county health rankings. The main message here is that the residents of Clayton have worse health behaviors and household, compared to their counterparts in other localities. But the most significant disparity among the six counties is observed in the access to clinical care. Clayton County ranks very low, 149th out of 159 other counties, while Fayette, for example, ranks second. And this table provides more information about the healthcare and clearly illustrates that one of the major challenges faced by Clayton County is the acute shortage of medical professionals. For example, there are only 25 primary care physicians in Clayton for 100 southern county residents. If you compare this rate with Decaf, in Decaf, there are 107 physicians, in Fayette, 110, and Fulton, 109. Clayton County also has lower dentist rate and mental health provider rates than other counties. Next, Dr. Spiel. We'll discuss the findings from the primary data analysis.
Yes, thank you. We all know the value of the primary data, right? We've seen a lot of numbers, but the primary data is that we have a very strong set here, a very strong set in the form of survey, that we have a very solid response rate. So, so this is excellent when it comes to actually putting numbers and writing a report, you know, from responses from the community. That's what we want, right? And so, so takeaways here from that survey, I'm speaking on behalf of the respondents, right? So I'm not establishing narrative, but from the respondents, the business attraction was huge. All right, so I threw, we had 50 questions, of course, that's in the comprehensive report, but I threw these into four strong categories, right? And so, because business attraction was so intense, you know, with the responses, it's like, how do we get the businesses here, right? And so the responses were taxes send us to war, of course, more partnerships between local companies and educational institutions, establishing those incubators, or those incubators, and take advantage of the airport, all right? Take advantage of the airport, that's a strong asset. Now, these, these next two categories are about perception, the perception of Clayton County. Well, the perception of labor, as you can see here with the takeaways, there's a shortage of qualified labor, all right? It's very difficult to attract qualified labor. Now, factors for this include high pay and quality, right? Those are the factors that, that made it very difficult, and the most likely skills were communication experience and education, respectively, ranked in the survey. But organizations have at least, you know, some had at least 10 openings, some had 20 openings, so there are jobs out there. And this was done in 2020, so we know, you know, the now hiring signs have gone up, right? And so anyway, I've perceived image here, over half indicated that Clayton County has improved its image over the past few years, all right? That's, that's definitely positive. But to improve it, there needs to be more business development, and of course, initiatives and training. And, and the reasons people commute rather than reside is the quality of public schools and safety. And then transportation and housing was the final section here. Economic development is hindered by the structure of transportation, all right? And so expanding that public transportation system was a way to springboard that economic growth. Also, there's a strong need for housing choices in Clayton County, specifically the single family houses, and the ideal new home price, new home price is between 100,000 and 200,000. And so the results from this survey allow us to do a SWOT analysis, right? And so this SWOT analysis, all we're doing here is just prioritizing... And so this SWOT analysis, all we're doing here is just prioritizing, and of course developing and defining the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of Clayton County. And as you can see here, the strengths we have, the airport is definitely a strength, proximity to Atlanta is a strength, access to the infrastructure, the education system, and the sheriff's office and police department. Now the weaknesses. The weaknesses include poor physical appearance, all right? High crime rate, lack of things to do in Clayton County, lack of quality housing, and inadequate access to medical care. Strong, strong weakness there. And so the opportunities, of course, include support to small businesses and entrepreneurship, but to capitalize on the growth of that health care springboard, right? So to capitalize on that, because health care is increasing, the industry is increasing, it's time to capitalize on that. So that is seen as an opportunity. Of course, housing development, grow the entertainment, grow the hospitality and recreational industries, and improve education and vocational training. Now the threats to Clayton County finally include the perception of a high crime rate, perception of a high crime rate, poor public image, the failure to attract and retain that skilled labor force we're looking for, and failure to attract and retain those new businesses. And lastly, the inadequate education and training to county residents.
So, let's take our bed.
One more time and see where we are. We looked at the secondary data, so we had some findings there. We look at the primary data. Primary data also showed us some perception. Remember, these things that Russell just mentioned are not facts, they are what the perception of the citizens in county are, okay? Granted that some of them are business owners, some of them are government employees, some of them are experts in this area, okay? But at the same time, we need to find out which one of them match the fact which is coming from the, you know, secondary data, the publicly available data. And then based on that, we develop our initiatives. So that was a thought process. And to do that, we had four subcommittees with experts from the county, resident, governments, small business, and different entities within county. And the result of all of that brainstorming is presented here as priorities. So these priorities were developed based on the secondary data and primary data, married together, and making some brainstorm based on previous, by the way, development plan had. So we didn't invent the wheel. We basically built upon what was there, and we tried to come up with these initiatives. So promote entrepreneurship and small business groups. So that was the first thing that we came up with. The way we are presenting them is we give you a recommendation, and each recommendation has suggested timeline. The key for suggested timeline is short term is anything less than one year. Medium is anything between one to three years. And then long term, four to five years, okay? When it comes to budget, when we say low budget, it is $250,000 or less. Medium budget range is 250 to $2 million. And then high budget is anything more than $2 million. And in terms of time, I'm not going to repeat these. And I basically, we have made them bolded, so you can read it on the PowerPoint yourself. But recommendations are as follows. So this one is coming from the strategic initiative, sorry, promote entrepreneurship and the small business group. So all of these recommendations, eight of them, are related to this specific topic. So boost the Clayton County citizens' ability to innovate through what, what we call the incubators and makers lab. So there are certain examples already existing in the county. Clayton County's school system, Atlanta Technical College, and Clayton County Library System already has some of these, mostly makers lab, I would say. Incubators, hopefully the local authority of Clayton County will have, you know, ability to establish one. Clayton State University is actually approved for initial budget request to have an innovation lab. And the City of Louisville, through our discussion in our subcommittees, mentioned that they are also interested to do so. But what we think is that if all of these are developed and added to the existing one, there should be a communication between these labs, so that if citizens go to one of these facilities and don't find what they are looking for, if they are connected with each other, they could be referred to the other one that has the equipment, the capability, the seminars, the workshop, whatever is available in that other facility, they could be aware of that as well. Recommendation number two, basically establishing a small business committee that is, consists of stakeholders from both public and private sector. This committee is basically coming, coming together representatives from prominent agencies such as the local authority of Clayton County, Office of Economic Development, Chamber of Commerce, Small Business Development Center, Library Services, so on and so forth, that basically can connect different citizens, different business owners, entrepreneurs to each other. And this committee could basically help them with developing more small businesses within the county. The expected timeline and budget is mentioned on the chart. The other recommendation was small business advocates. And these are basically focusing on helping small businesses in the county. This is more or less a short term and low budget, but still would be helpful for the citizen in the county. The annual Clayton County Small Business Expo would be another thing that could help the small businesses. There are certain events that currently are happening in the county, but the idea here is to get them connected to each other, so that if one is aware, one agency is aware of the other one events, and also citizens are aware of these events as well. And we will have a recommendation regarding that, where to publicize this kind of event, which is going to come in the communication initiative as well. Establish a mentor-mentee program. Some of our steering committee members said that it would be a great idea to have a relationship between, you know, small business owners and the established entrepreneurs. And that will be helpful for all businesses in Clayton County, as well as entrepreneurs. The next recommendation is business apprenticeship program, which basically enables small businesses to work with larger, more established, and more experienced businesses as well. The next recommendation is the, conduct a thorough assessment of current businesses in county and develop, and develop resources that will help entrepreneurs identify businesses with growth potential and uniquely suited for Clayton County. These are basically specialized towards Clayton County, because what Clayton County businesses need are different from other counties' need. And proximity to, for example, airport determines some, what kind of, for example, businesses could be located near airport, and so on and so forth. So depending on where you are located and where you are conducting your businesses, you will have different needs and needs for resources. The next is a very important one, financial literacy. Believe it or not, some of our business owners do need this financial literacy. And then we need to actually help them, especially entrepreneurs who don't have a lot of experience. And we thought that, or the team thought that this is a great opportunity for us to build financial literacy among entrepreneurs. And with that said, let me move to the next.
The Labor, Employment, and Public Safety Subcommittee that I chaired developed the recommendations for the second strategic priority, workforce development and employer engagement. First of all, the subcommittee member stated that there is strong need to improve efficiency of the current employment and training programs to ensure that we reduce the unemployment rate in Clayton and Clayton County residents will have more opportunities to find employment. And it was stated that the funding of this program has to be tied to performance, so that way, yes, the efficiency will be improved. There are agencies that are responsible for assisting residents with finding a job, such as, for example, Clayton County Career Center, should establish more partnerships with the local employers, with the school system, with the universities. This way, the career center will be aware of the employment opportunities for county residents, and this should help the county to address some workforce development issues. It was also stated that, in the short run, the county should create a new position, most likely this person will be an employee of the Development Authority of Clayton County. And this person will be responsible for managing all employment and training programs in the Clayton County. And what is very important, identifying new finding opportunities for this program. But in the long run, the county should establish the separate agency that will manage these programs for the county. And the possible name for this agency that was suggested is WorkSource Clayton, or maybe Clayton Works. As you know, one of the industries that is expanding in Clayton is transportation and warehousing. And therefore, as this industry is growing, we have to train, yes, potential workers. So this program, Strive Atlanta, has proven to be very effective in other localities. More than 80,000 graduates from this program now have a stable employment. And therefore, subcommittee suggested that the effort that Eretropolis will, will take in the next several years to implement this program, yes, the county has support basically of this efforts. Because this program helps those who are interested to work in logistics to find employment, and also, and even addresses some barriers to employment issue. Another effective program that should be implemented is construction-ready program. This sector of the economy is growing very rapidly, not only in Clayton, but in, in other counties. And given the structure of the current labor force in the county and the educational attainments of the county residents, this program will be beneficial, and some of the residents will be able to find a job. The subcommittee also had a fruitful discussion about barriers to employment and concluded that some low-income residents who cannot afford their own cars, they cannot find employment just because there are limited transportation options, public transportation options in some areas in Clayton. For example, in Forest Park and south side of the airport. So therefore, it was suggested that county should reduce this barrier to employment by expanding Martha's Bus Transportation Network. But one of the major disconnect in Clayton County is between the business attraction initiatives and the workforce development, yes. It is crucial for the county to be proactive, to invest in the workforce development, and to ensure that county will grow in the future. Because when new business comes to, when the potential employer would like to open an office, a factory in Clayton, that employer, yes, analyzes the local labor market and would like to know if the workforce is ready, is there workforce that specializes in certain areas? I'm sorry. And the last two recommendations regarding the business attraction are the following. So currently, Clayton County is very dependent on one industry, transportation and warehousing. And even though this industry, yes, has been growing rapidly, so many jobs were created, we have to think about the diversification of the county economy to make it less, to foster economic growth. Therefore, subcommittee suggested that such industries as finance, e-commerce, healthcare, information services have to be expanded. And the county should focus on creating well-paying jobs to attract the talent and to retain the talent. One of the values to recruit more employers, of course, will be to leverage Clayton County's Tier One status. And the subcommittee stated a couple of times that unfortunately, in the past, not enough efforts were taken in this area to promote county to potential employers. Next, Mr. Hunt will talk about strategic proposal number three.
Thank you, Dr. Hayduk. Commissioners, I'd like to present to you the top recommendations that came out of the Housing Committee, focusing with housing and education empowerment. Number one, sorry, can I get it back up? There we go. Our top recommendations, you see, have suggested the timeline and also suggested agency involvement budget size for housing education. First recommendation looks at hosting an annual or bi-annual housing summit to bring community and business leaders on board with the common housing and education vision for the county. Beyond talking about it, there's opportunities to discuss zoning opportunities, infrastructure needs, and so forth. So something kind of putting in line with the 2034 vision plan that the county had a little while back. Beyond just adding homes to the actual county, needs to be an appropriate vetting program to evaluate housing proposals in terms of their sustainable impact on the county's development priorities, as shown. Every so often, some development priorities will take more precedence than others. So beyond just looking to add homes to the marketplace, even those homes targeted to a certain price range and all that, a review of proposals need to be looked, we said recommend a review of proposals in line with how they would impact the following development areas. Number three, deploy homeownership initiatives to grow population and business density in what is the underrepresented middle income and high income sectors of the, of the, of the Clayton County actual market. And number four, back up, sorry, number four, get a facelift. And my wife likes that, you know? Get a facelift in terms of looking pretty. More than 50% of Clayton County's housing stock is actually 30 to 50 years old, all right? So neighborhood stabilization programs can redevelop and rehabilitate older neighborhoods, and similar programs can be used to convert any underutilized building space for where, in the warehousing district and downtown area for mixed use and revitalization actually efforts. Fifth and fifth recommendation is to capitalize on the exurbanization of young, remote-working professionals. It's a unique way right now with remote working today. You can live, don't have to live right there where the job is at. You can literally import that job into a brand-new actual location. So rather people leaving the county to go to work, or people coming into the county to work and take income back to the county where they live to spend, remote working provides an opportunity to bring in more high-income professional service jobs, even the tech sector as well. There's opportunities to remote work, remote work with, with those opportunities in Atlanta area. And then also in education, there is an undersupply of early childhood education programs and assets in Clayton County. And we recommend assistance with the public school system, with opportunities to expand early childhood education. childhood education programs, and assist Clayton State University and Atlanta Technical College efforts to train more early childhood educators. We see this as a priority need that needs to be filled, as Clayton County has one of the highest percent of children between the ages three and four not attending preschool in our six-county comparison. With that, I'll hand it back over to Dr. Hayduk. Thank you very much.
And strategic priority number four is leverage access to healthcare, and given the recent pandemic, yes, this, the initiatives that I will present here are very relevant. And the first, I'm sorry, the first recommendation is related to the mental health crisis that is faced now by Clayton County. I invited to one of the meetings the members of the Board of Directors of the Southern Regional Medical Center, and they informed us that Southern Regional is overwhelmed with the mental health patients, those who face serious mental health issues, and this is not a problem that only Clayton County faces, yes, this is an issue that we observe in other localities as well. Because the recent crisis was very unusual, it wasn't an ordinary economic crisis when people just lose their jobs. On top of that, many county residents, yes, contracted coronavirus and exhibited serious health issues, they lost their loved ones, and the lockdown also played a very important role, contributed to this mental health crisis. Therefore, subcommittee suggested that the county should take active measures to address this mental health crisis, and it is clear that we have to increase capacity of the existing mental health facilities, and maybe reevaluate this crisis later on and see if there is a need to establish new mental health facilities in Clayton County. Another recommendation is related to the drug abuse. It turns out that some employers in Clayton County have this issue where many applicants for the position failed drug test, and in some cases, like one example, there were 100 applicants and 50 of them, yes, or 50% actually failed drug test. Therefore, the county should develop and implement some proactive programs to prevent drug abuse, and we have to inform those youths and young adults that if they abuse drugs, it is not just a health issue, it has economic, it has actually adverse economic consequences, it reduces their chances to find employment in the future. To ensure that county residents will have access to more convenient and affordable medical services, the subcommittee also suggested, and this was also a recommendation that came from the entire steering committee as well, that Clayton County should expand urgent care network, and this will address the issue that Southern Regional now faces. Many residents, because of lack of these, lack of urgent care centers, they go to the emergency room at the Southern Regional. And unfortunately, some of them do not have health insurance and are not able to pay those bills. And the last recommendation is about addressing the acute shortage of medical professionals in Clayton County. As discussed before, we are not talking just about some small deficit of certain type of doctors, yes, for some type of medical professionals, this shortage is huge. The primary care physician rate in Clayton is more than four times smaller than in other localities. Next, Dr. Karandish will present strategic priority number five.
The good news is that this is the last pillar that we are going to talk about, so I know we have talked a lot, but like you all have heard three Ls of, you know, real estate, location, location, location. When it comes to policymakers and government, I think there are three Cs, communication, communication, communication. So it should not be a surprise that one of our strategic priorities was empower collaboration through effective communication. So one first question or challenge that we had was, you know, how could Clayton County make sure that they provide easy access to resources for all Clayton County constituents, you know, residents, stakeholders, businesses? And our recommendation was to provide a one-stop-shop website where we can actually showcase all resources available, and I know that county, you know, website already does many of those, but there are certain areas that you cannot touch, or you cannot provide access to, and all of those could be under one umbrella, under this website that we are actually going to actually showcase it today. This is one of our recommendations that actually exists today. We are very happy to say that this initiative, we already started working on, and this is not us, actually, this is county IT department that has helped us working on this, and we are very happy to report that this initiative has already started to work upon. And by the way, I should mention that this is actually based on a work that has been done before, and remained dormant for a while, and now we are revitalizing the old effort. Now, one of the benefits of such a website is that, for example, county could give citizens economic outlook, information, and this can be, you know, updated on a regular basis, including this strategic economic development plan. We can have certain benchmarks, we can have certain KPIs, and at any point of time, tell citizens, okay, we wanted to do recommendation number one, this is where we are, this is the goal, and this is what we have to do in the next six months, next one year, and so on and so forth. Now, let me actually show you what I was talking about. The website is called One Clayton, and there are three domains that are already in place right now, dot org, dot com, dot net, and basically, we are envisioning that any, you know, county citizen could go there, and by the way, this website also is connected, would be connected to Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, all social media, and then we envision that all entities, governments, cities, also nonprofits, and so on and so forth, you name it. Any activity that's happening in Clayton County could be advertised, could be, you know, our citizen could be informed about what is happening, and they could go there and basically see what's happening in Clayton County. One of related challenges, I already mentioned, and you have seen in the primary data report, that while the citizen were saying that crime rate improved, you know, we have lower crime rate in Clayton County, one of the concern also was crime rate. So crime rates showed up many places. So we got to do something about it, and this website could help us to give citizens actual information about how crime rate has gone down in the past few years. Actually, we did have a presentation by Clayton County Police Department, and the actual number of crime committed in the county has gone down in the last three years. But maybe we are not doing a great job of passing this good information to citizens so that they also know and be assured that we are moving in the right direction. So there are some recommendations here that, you know, maybe we need to do some PR activity, and sheriff officers or police department and cities police could help with this activity. The second challenge in this specific initiative is, all right, we had some strategic economic development plan in the past, and this is also a new one. So how can we, you know, ensure that this recommendation be fruitful in the next five years, and we could move forward? And to achieve that, we are suggesting that we facilitate the measurement of the progress, having some KPIs defined, and then make sure where we are, and also see what needs to be done. And to do that, we need to actually, we are hoping to keep the strategic steering committee, strategic plan, steering committee in place, maybe add some new members to it as we move forward, as needed, and then make sure to have a biannual report of where we are and how we gathering, collect more data, and then make decision about revising the plan as we move forward. And this would be some addition that maybe in the past, we have not done a great job of, and this would be something that make this specific strategic plan different from the previous ones. And then with that said, I kept my promise, we stop here. I should mention that in doing this, we had a list of people involved, of course, you see four of the five members of the team. Dr. Vincent could not be here today, and then we had a special acknowledgement for our chairs, co-chairs. Do you want to be recognized? But thank you for your help all the way, you know, they have been there with us every step we took. And then also, Dean of College of Business, who is actually watching us on your, you know, virtual broadcast of this session. And then, of course, all the steering committee members, and here's a list of the steering committee, subcommittee members. This is the one that I chaired, and we had some guests, as you can see, there are many guests who attended. Irene chaired another, basically, subcommittee which focused on labor, employment, and healthcare, and she had also guests. And then Brian had focused on housing, income equality, and poverty reduction, and he had also guests in his subcommittee, and then Dr. Vincent, who is not present today, also had small business and entrepreneurship subcommittee. And I think I didn't mention my own subcommittee member focusing on education and training. So with that said, thank you so much.
Well, y'all did have done a lot of work, a lot of work, and I appreciate everybody coming together and providing that information for you to be able to compile that data. Also, to be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to thank our county employees. Already got a busy workload, but they kicked in and obviously helped out in this matter as well. So what I'll do at this time is open up any questions for board members.
Well, I guess I'll speak. I wait to be acknowledged.
Commissioner Franklin.
Okay, thank you. I just want to echo, that was absolutely phenomenal, to see this information brought before us in such a concisive manner. But what I love most about it is you brought what was the perception versus the reality, and you made recommendations. And I'm so glad that you hit the elephant in the room, because I'm one that is all about progress, and if we're not meeting the mark, then we got to go back and reevaluate. Much of what you brought to us today, believe it or not, is being done in our county, because I also see our director, Ms. Rogers, out here, and I participated in several of her events, even before becoming a commissioner, only for the last five years, and they've had people come to the events where they're connecting to business owners and so forth. I know that years ago, the citizens of Clayton County voted for a incubator. It just has not happened. Also, as you hit the nail on the head, there are a lot of other needs that are being provided, and we appoint people to positions, but I want to add one thing to the effect of communication, because that's key. There is a disconnect, as we can see, between what's being presented versus how we're actually resolving these issues with those roles. And so I want to add to you talking about strategic implementation has been a barrier for us, but one of the things that I have learned as a business owner and a 25-year resident, and now in this role, is the evaluation and reevaluation process. At some point, we got to get to the place to where we're not always just gathering information, and then also starting, starting. If you don't go back and evaluate what you started, and tweak it, and fix it, and make sure that where things are disconnected are now connecting, then we end up back here again. So I'm actually very optimistic, and I hope and I pray that as a community, that we continue to not just come together, but actually execute this plan, come up with a viable plan, and evaluate and reevaluate that plan, and roll our sleeves up and do the hard work. Clayton County is one that is on the verge of greatness. I want to mention one thing about the housing. Mr. Vincent, I got to give you credit for this. In 2017, we had our first housing summit. We continue to have that housing summit. I can only speak for the district in which I live in at this time, and Mr. Vincent can tell you, because of those housing summits and bringing the key people together, we have been able to affect the housing that is available, as well as the sale prices. And we've seen a trend, upward trend, of those who are retiring out from other areas from around the country and coming to Clayton County, which you did not add on here, and I don't think I saw that I see Ms. Tori Stroud on here, we got the best senior services division. I believe that with our water, they got something special in there, because it's 70 and 80-year-old women, then I need us to check their driver's license, because they can outdance me. But that's something that is, that we need to look back at and see how we can build upon it, because that's going to help us change our image. So just wanted to share those few points, and I'm looking forward to the board doing a deeper dive. Maybe we could have some work sessions and take them step by step, implement one plan at a time. Excited.
Yeah, and just to expound on Commissioner Franklin's comment about, we are doing, already doing some of these recommendations that y'all have outlined. For instance, the Behavior Health Center has been tapped under our splosh, and we are actually fast-tracking that through a bond, the issues of a bond to go ahead and try to get that built. And there's some other things, such as the financial literacy piece with our libraries, where we're partnering with Truist Bank, and I think Wells Fargo, maybe a couple of others. But one thing that you touched on is absolutely correct, is telling our story better and get beyond the normal sense of, well, not normal sense, but sometimes you only touch the same people over and over and over again. We need to start hitting those new pockets of people where we can continue to get that word out. So I just wanted to bring that to light as well, that yes, we are on the right track, but we need to do a whole lot more. So I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions?
I do have a question. Thank you for the presentation, it was very great. How many small businesses did you all talk to in the area to begin to derive some of your conclusions?
So we distributed the survey to 3,200 businesses, all businesses that are registered in Clayton, and then the Small Business and Entrepreneurship Subcommittee, actually, you see the members in the slide, had represented it from the small business sector, some experts, and of course, experts in this area.
Okay. So respondents were about 200, right?
206, was it? Six or no?
Yeah, most were business clients.
Great, great.
Forty-seven percent.
And then these are some of the business owners that were in the subcommittee, and then there were some in the other subcommittee, as for example, Brian's subcommittee, there were small business owners.
And was there a breakdown in categorization as far as revenue produced and employees for those businesses as well, so that we could begin to find? So that we could begin to find a median between the bottom and the top end?
Yeah, we dug in, and it's in the comprehensive report, we dug into the revenues. And now I believe, I don't have the report from you, but the small percentage was the larger companies. So most respondents were revenues anywhere between $0 and $100,000 per year.
Okay. And also too, I noticed you had a slide early on where it spoke about the ideal housing range being between $100,000 and $200,000. And then we go back to what affordable housing is. And affordable housing is basically, for me, it's based on the wages earned coupled with the wages in that area and the housing market in that area. So we're talking a $200,000 home, we're looking at about a $40,000 income, $50,000 income, which means that is a lower-tiered job. So how are we, how would we address that issue? Now, we've got on one end where we have these homes that are in the lower tiers, but we've got on the other end of Clayton County, these homes that are on the upper end, an upper tier. Those are a lot of your business owners, those are a lot of folks that travel outside of the county. How do we begin to realistically, because I see a lot of concept with some reality in this, but how do we realistically begin to address that?
Brian, you want to use one of the backflip slides?
Yes, one of the backflip slides.
Before you do that, though,
Sure.
Have you taken into consideration the fact that the lumber prices have gone so far up? That the reason, I didn't mean to be rude or disrespectful, but I laughed about it, and you saw the laugh, because that $100,000 to $200,000 has pretty much vanished because of the cost to build a home. So I'll...
I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner Franklin, because, I'm, this Commissioner Franklin's...
It's okay, because those are, you know, pre-COVID has changed things quickly overnight.
As the slide here, considering lumber prices nationwide, the most recent peak, that I go back to September of 2020.
Yes.
A thousand-foot board of lumber was selling from those $1,000, which was making a two-by-four in Home Depot retail over $5. Then, of course, between two, you see they did the correction there between September and through the first of 2021, which is typically normal, you see a slowdown in building. But you're also seeing, like, once again, an increase in lumber prices that peaked as much as $1,400 to $1,500.
That's right.
I did a back-of-the-envelope calculation to see if you were to go back almost 10 years and rebuild the same homes at these prices, it all, it adds almost additional $12,000 to $15,000 to the actual property, and, you know, more so depending on square foot. And you think about borrowing costs. Every $1,000 borrowed increases the mortgage payment by $50, and that's before insurance and taxes are kind of thrown into the overall payment. This is actually an impediment in terms of building out new properties. For more income-specific, you know, needs, is one of the things we did look at. And on our committee, the Patrick Egeke, who is on the planning, planning and zoning side, we did discuss opportunity to look at converting, if possible, or rezoning an area where you have a lot of maybe vacant building space into mixed development. So in other words, work with what you, work with what you already have. Rather than trying to build something brand-new, you're going to have something cost prohibitive. Even speaking with developers, they can't really trim costs too much, you know, and they don't really feel comfortable even making a profit on the prices they're having to charge with high lumber costs. So one of the recommendations would be to look at grant programs or loan programs to assist in the redevelopment or rehab of older properties, especially if those are actually owned. And being able to transition a lot of those older properties without a mortgage back into ownership versus renting, because the real value of the market now is actually renting. Since the last crisis, you better to rent the value than own the value. And that's been an overall trend, which can be actually reversed. So looking at affordable housing is how do you improve the income diversity with your legacy residents that are actually here. One of the things you brought up about population is, one thing, it is not really shown very well on the right graph, but in the left graph, there are a lot of people coming in, net coming into the county, as opposed to actually leaving, because you see it at the bottoms, kind of seeing it trickle out. In terms of age distribution, Clayton County does fairly well compared to St. Henry County in attracting that young population, 25 to 29-years-old. The net loss you see there in migration of older persons, it's a reflection of death rate more than anything else. So in terms of housing, in terms of the end of remote working, bringing in that individual who can remote work out of Clayton County from their job in Atlanta or further out, is, you know, within that, before having kids, they're in that eight, they're ready-to-buy mode. As long as interest rates remain low, which they're not, we note that, interest rates will rise. The three-year bond market suggests they will, much sooner than later. That might be an impediment, but it also helps to slow down, maybe cool lumber prices, and may bring some things back into that affordable range. But I think working with, working with the stock you have now, and figure out creatively how to convert people out of renting into ownership, even with existing tenants, would be a good place to actually start.
So if I hear you right, you're saying that we can actually hit two marks, which is to redevelop existing buildings into mixed use would allow for us to not only attract the younger generation in, but also bring some sources of entertainment in as well. So we'll begin to have those flats here in Clayton County, along with some other things. This is, this is huge. I don't know if you took this into consideration. Something has developed, and if I could share it with my colleague, our fellow board members. I think in a, it's only been like within 30 days, I saw interesting trend in the market. Homes in Clayton County and all around are now going to the highest bidder. There are new subdivisions that are closed out and only have like maybe less than 20 homes left, because we went through so long of a gap of building. Clayton County was the only county that was not building. We had a moratorium on building for, for an extended period of time. So as soon as we opened up the building market, they built. But then the lumber prices went up, because I don't know if people realize it's because with COVID, those lumber plants shut down. And so they're having to get ramped up again, and it's taking a while. But with that being stated, you've got folks right now, and I've received calls, who are on waiting lists to get a new home. And a home that normally would have sold for $284,000 would sell up to like over the $20,000 to $30,000 over the asking price. Now, we got to keep that in mind, because that means that somebody has to have that cash flow coming in. That's not your new homeowner, like a starter home. So that's huge.
I was trying to find a slide. I didn't, I was adding it to my list, but I was looking at the change in the value of housing from lower to mid-tier. A lot of your lower-value homes, I'd say between the $50,000 to $100,000 range, median's about $150,000, have actually increased in value and jumped to the next tier. So it may look like there's more of these homes available in value, but there actually is not. And I'd be happy for us, when the updated presentation include that slide in, so you can kind of see that.
And you know, just not to bore the board, I got one more thing I want to mention, because I love statistics. Love stats, it gives you a roadmap, you know? Go to one other thing, one, two quick items. The first one is, let's go to transportation. I don't know if y'all realize, but the state of Georgia has the darkest roads of many other areas. Particularly in Clayton County, we have the darkest roads. We don't have bike lanes, we don't have a continuous sidewalk. And then you hit something, the nail on the head, about hiring someone in for another position. Other jurisdictions took control of that space early on, and they brought in people to focus on that specifically for their jurisdiction. Douglas County has seen a great opportunity there, and they even have brought in transit. Believe it or not, Forsyth County has transit, as well as Coeida County that they control, which is huge. In Clayton, we've got to make sure that what we have invested our funds in are actually delivering back to us. We got to make sure that we look focused on the first mile, last mile, and mobility. We do not have those sidewalks. As you saw, we had two people we lost in a matter of an hour, less than an hour, on 1941, which is the busiest and the most dangerous highway in the state of Georgia. And remember, it's State Road 3, but it's 1941 US. So that means we got a lot of travelers on that road. So I'm going to keep focusing on those lights. We got something coming up on July 22nd, we got to make sure we get sidewalks and an overhead path and bike lanes.
And what also justifies the light investments is, one thing I suggest in terms of housing, was being able to look at those housing development initiatives that focus on increasing population and business density. So with business and population density comes the need for more light investments. So that is location-specific, so you're looking at, trying to, has to be decided whether to get the best bang for your buck.
Now you go to that transit-oriented development, and I promised the last thing for y'all.
I'll win.
He said, "You're right." We have $18 million that we received, because we lost SPOS dollars. We received that money from the state. We normally would have used it, because it would have been received for SPOS projects. The money's still sitting there. We also just got infused with a, well, available to us a large amount of money through the American Rescue Plan. What we got to do is take this information, prioritize it, and tie that in together, and not make decisions in isolation. That's going to be the key to the roadmap.
If I may, I would like to go back to your question.
I would like, yeah, I would like my question answered eventually.
That is, you mentioned low, you know, lower-end of housing versus the suggested $250,000, close to $250,000. On the low side, the shortage is not as pronounced as the higher side. So that's what was one of the suggestions that the company, Subcommittee, was brought. The idea was that there are certain people with the higher-paying jobs who don't find communities within the county to locate in the county. So that's why that recommendation was there. Now, because of lumber pricing,
I understand that.
Then building maybe is not the best strategy, revitalizing the neighborhood that are existing, basically giving a facelift, in Brian's terminology, might be a better route to go. But you do have those stock of housing that are, you know, lower-end. And if somebody, you know, paint them and, you know, clean them up, they could be, you know, good neighborhoods and, you know, are lower-budget, you know, customer group.
Even with the increase in materials, and the labor is not going to increase, and the wages are not going to increase in respect, in ratio to them, there not going to be a one-to-one increase there. So I do like the idea of coming back and beginning to facelift some of these, some of these areas. You know, we, at our company here in Clayton, we actually employ folks that live in Clayton. So we have, on our payroll, we actually have folks that live here in Clayton. So I take a real personal interest in it, because I know what we pay them. I know what their, pretty much what their home values are, because it just happened to be there in my district as well. But we've got to be cognizant of our wages versus the businesses coming in. I just don't believe that, and it goes to not having that workforce that is trained yet. We can't expect our housing stock to go up to a certain point, but our wages are not being addressed as well. So we've got to be able to look at it from two separate standpoints and figure out what is going to be the priority in addressing this in the most cognizant way.
Actually, you know, when it comes to education, this is one, one area. So I showed you already the percentage of population with a degree, bachelor degree. This is the associate degree. Again, you see Clayton County, but here compared to other counties. And then when it comes to high school graduate, and we have seen another version of this also. This is only till 2018, I'm sorry, continues upward trend. This trend, by the way, is something promising, because as you can see, the gap that was wider at the beginning is closing down. And this slope, hopefully, if it continues further outside this chart, they merge to each other. So that, we should keep this going. But back to your question, these are the, you know, percentage of the population that get a high school degree. This is, this is associate degree. So as you can see, when it comes to actually bachelor degree, it goes below 20%. So, you know, you are absolutely right, you know? The type of jobs that are available should reflect the population. But hope is that through increasing the education, we will have higher-paying job ads.
Have you ever seen a program also, and I just, this just came to my mind, when it said we only have, what is it, 25 dentists and 71 physicians, or primary care physicians, something like that, in the county? Has there ever been a program, or is there any kind of program where, in a sense, you're going through some of these medical and dental schools in order to recruit and incentivize them to come into the county? For instance, we had, I just remember, at our zoning meeting the other night, we had a young lady that got represented. Well, she just graduated, she's from Riverdale, and she just graduated as a dentist. So she's trying to come back into the county to create. But is there any kind of program that exists out there that begins to do that?
There is actually an initiative to establish the residency program at the Southern Regional Medical Center.
What?
And this is one of the action items for these recommendations, because we don't have, of course, time to present all the action steps. But the idea of this residency program is, of course, to encourage the, those who related to this program to work in Clayton, yes, and to prepare those doctors for positions in Clayton.
Okay.
Yes, this is certainly one of the best ways to address the shortage of medical professionals. And I also have one comment related to your other question. So this is the, just a second, the findings, the findings from the secondary data analysis. On this slide, as you see, of course, we completely agree with you that the personal income per capita in Clayton is so much lower than in other counties. In many residences, yes, they cannot afford those $200,000 homes. But what we are suggesting, there are already thousands of incomuters who work in Clayton and who make on average $57,000 per year. So this is on average, yes. There are some percentage of them make more than $100,000. So the idea is to encourage them to relocate to Clayton. And many of the experts that serve on the subcommittee, they claim that many of those who work in Clayton, they cannot reside here, because there are, there is no high-quality homes that they prefer to live in. So this is one of the issues that prevents those incomuters from living in Clayton.
Thank you. Goes back to perception, because we do have nice, quality homes in which they can live.
Maybe not so many, because there are so many high-income folks in Clayton. So much more than, yes, high-income people who live in Clayton. But that's a good point, yes.
But if you can attract them to stay here, then they will pay property tax, which increases the, you know, funds for education, and this is going to be upward spiral instead of a downward.
Gotcha.
And in the housing market too, what we found, or some people have found, is that we have fairly good starting houses. But to your point, if they want to move up and their salaries go up, we may not have as many higher-priced homes.
And then back to the medical education. If the plan, the recommendation goes through, and we will have some, you know, residency program in Southern Regional, then one part of policy could be, okay, we will subsidize the education, but you say you promise that you will locate in Clayton. So basically, a county could offer a scholarship, whatever you want to call it. And then say, for, to, in order to receive that, you have to commit to, let's say, being and practicing in Clayton for five years, 10 years, whatever term you decide.
Now, when you brought up about the people who are commuting into work, have you identified the employers? Do we have a category of those employers?
have you identified the employers? Do we have a category of those employers?
Hi, category of the employment industries?
Industries or the employers in general who are, who our folks are commuting into work?
Well, that, what you know for sure is that high income commuters are more likely to be high income people. But I'm not aware of the publicly available, publicly available data that shows the distribution by industry. What is the percentage of in commuters by industry? What I know is just that seventy-seven percent of all workers in Clayton reside in other counties.
Wow.
Seventy-seven.
So we know our top employers. Are you all going to present this to the school system?
Oh, actually, the superintendent was one of our committee members, so he has seen the.
Yeah, the reason I say that is because I'm excited to say that I know a lot of people do reside here. But I'm just going to be honest, for sustainability purposes, I am one that's all for making sure that we give a shot to those larger income jobs within our county, whether it's the school system or Clayton County Board of Commissioners. If we know this is an issue for us in the county, we got to step up first to be the leader in that, to make that change and to bring that change. Too often, what I look at is we got folks that are making well over six figures and they don't reside in our county. And there are those who live here that they just don't have that opportunity because I meet them and they go to other areas and they get hired.
One thing that actually our committee worked on is the early education. Because research has shown that when you catch kids, when they are young and teach them, you know, enough, they will become successful when they grow up, when they go to high school. The earlier you can catch them, the better it is. And actually, the, that is, that is the motivation behind that early childhood center, which is actually in process, as you have mentioned, it is already being done. But we wanted to emphasize, because we cannot over emphasize the importance of early childhood education. And the data that Brian showed you shows that, you know, we have a high percentage of three years old or four years old who do not attend pre-k. And, you know, this is an issue that needs to be addressed and be, is being addressed, actually. I'm very happy to tell you that it is being addressed, but we still need to do more.
One last thing from me as a point of clarity. The eighteen million that we have from the state is actually from the lost funds. They're actually lost funds and not SPOLOST. So I just want to make sure that citizens realize that, or know that we're not setting, holding that money because SPOLOST funds are dedicated capital projects that must go to that cause. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
And I, if I don't get this down, make the case about this. I don't know if you all are aware, but a couple of years ago, the county did a switch to pushing more AP classes. As one that was able to take advantage of a dual enrollment program, and by the time that, over twenty-something years ago, I graduated from high school, I already had a, um, and I'm not saying I, but I'm saying you, I was already able to get the, uh, the two-year degree. If we know there is a gap between those that have degrees in our community, I would like to know what can we do to, um, to get more people involved or to encourage our leaders in education to do more of the dual enrollment? Because if we know our graduation rate is even seventy-six percent and if the percentage of those that will participate, even if it's twenty percent, you've just increased your number of people with a degree, as you talked about. We catch them early on in our community. Also, one thing to think about, if we know that our, our folks in our community don't have a large income, what better way to encourage a student to finish that four-year degree than by them getting that two years at no cost to them? That's two years that that parent didn't have to pay for. So I would love for us to put a pin in that one and I just didn't want to forget that.
One thing I'd like to add as an opportunity to look at is for those persons who benefit from a dual enrollment and they go on and they get that four-year degree, is early on at the college level, is connecting them with one of those high paying employers in the county that somebody outside the county is working for. And it's creating that strategic relationship with that employer early on. So the employer can see what that student is doing from freshman year, sophomore year and so forth. Right after graduation, so the, not only is the, is the person, a student graduates, they are going to live, they want to, they will live and work.
Right.
In Clayton County. And so that's a long-term program. And so we have something like that working, we have that called Career Spine at Clayton State that is going to look at creating that relationship early on for our students to graduate. They already have that, can, already have that teaching relationship for the last several years with the, um, with the Delta or one of the higher, um, higher earning employers out there.
That's super.
For this study, what was the definition of high paying or high wages? Or where was that, that line, demarc, line of demarcation?
Even the Department of Labor does not set this limit, what, what is a high, high wage. But we can look on the average earnings per job, yes. Fifty seven, back in twenty nineteen, it was fifty-seven thousand in Clayton. So we can identify the top twenty percentile as high, high wage earners, for example.
I mean, twenty percent, twenty-five percent, you know? The, the, I, I, I think what I'm trying to say is that there is not a standard definition.
Yeah.
And this widely used.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, and I understand that.
Researchers use this.
Yeah, and that's why I just was kind of trying to find that, that sweet spot from what you all were discussing.
I mean, for simplicity, you can say anything above average could top fifty percent.
Where do we go from here? Or where do you all go from here? Or are you finished?
Okay. First of all, we are not finished. This is just, I mean, really, I honestly believe in that. And actually, that's why one of our main recommendations is to make sure, we are not going anywhere, we are at Clayton State University, okay? We want to make sure that this effort would be fruitful and we would be able to come back five years down the road and say, we achieved this, we achieved this, and we did not achieve this. Sorry, we did not achieve this. Why? What's wrong with that? At least admit that you have not achieved, achieved this and you have achieved that. So.
That's good.
That's the goal.
Where we're going to go from here, we'd like for you all to take this plan. You got a disk with it on it, we'll email you the archived executive summary. At the next board meeting, we're likely to give a vote of support on it. And then we'll do this work with our chief operating officer and all, look at all the recommendations and, and make sure we get those in place, bring that back to you all, let y'all approve that. We would love to keep the CREST team on board and to do that semi, semi-annual review of everything to make sure we're on track. If you notice, Dr. Correndes started with the six pillars and had the five recommendations. They're so very close together. What I've discovered is Clayton County Board of Commissioners are a great job in providing resources to the citizens. Matter of fact, you got so much stuff out there to help, it's too much to keep up with. So the question is, let us pull this together with the leadership and you all are welcome to get involved as much as you want to and come back and have a answer to who will be the lead agencies for all these recommendations and move it forward, because there are some, could be some requests of funds in there. Of course, you all have to address that, but let the leadership, if that's okay with the chief operating officer, the chief financial officer, work with Erica and I. And we, we pull in the chamber and come back, you know, with some final recommendations before your next board meeting. That, that's fair?
That answer your question? You're good.
You sound ready to that?
All right, well, listen, we appreciate it, all the work that y'all put into this and we definitely, definitely will look forward to continuing this conversation. I'm avid believer, just like y'all, I don't want you to put all this work and it comes to nothing. We just can't put it on a shelf, we got to keep moving. And do it in a way that's going to be beneficial for not only the county government, but especially for our citizens. So with that said, again, thank you for your time, thank you for the presentation. And there being no further business before this board, we stand adjourned.